I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. Administrator, if you would care to lead us to the invocation.
Please join me in an attitude of prayer. Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this day that you've given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. We are ever mindful of the opportunities to render our services to our citizens and to this community. We pray for your strength and guidance as we conduct our business today. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approving this evening's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as it has been printed. Discussion?
No, thanks.
Any comment from the audience? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
By the way, just a point, because I see a lot of new faces here, I just want to make sure everybody is aware that when it comes to voting, under our new constitution, myself as the presiding commissioner only votes in case of attire or other particular situations. So please don't interpret my non-vote as either support or non-support of an issue. It's just the procedure we work under, just so everybody kind of understands that. That brings us to meeting schedule. Administrator?
Yes, Commissioner. Their next scheduled work session will be next Wednesday, February the 2nd. That meeting will be held at 2:00 PM in this room.
Thank you. Honorary resolutions, there aren't listed on tonight's agenda. Discussion items, we have two items under discussion. The first one has to do with Digital Budget Book. Administrator, could you give us a little lead into that?
Yes. We have here before us, we have our county auditor Victor Hurlbert here to tell us about this new program, the Digital Budget Book.
I didn't see him back there. He's not in his usual position. Mr. Auditor, please proceed when you are ready to, I think, I believe you have a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor, and I recognize there are a lot of guests here this night, so this will be a very high-level, essentially brief overview of the Clay County Digital Budget Book. Essentially just for citizens and anyone in Clay County government, just go to the home website, claycountymo.gov. If you go to our transparency portal, there's a drop-down there, and you can find it right here, and you can click on either the, this banner here, or below we have another link. And so I'll go ahead and do that. Essentially what a digital budget book is, is it's another step, Commissioners, for our government to become a more professional-run government and reach national standards. Ultimately, this is the template and mechanism for the county to make an application for a distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association, something the county's never had before. And so I will show you essentially how this is and what it holds the benefit to you and the citizens. It has, you know, major sections here. It's powered by a company called ClearGov that's recognized by the National Association of Counties for developing this distinguished budget presentation award. But just real high-level introduction, you know, talks a lot about some more broader context categories for the county overall, so demographics, economics, things that pertain and make sense for the entire county, for citizens to understand our budget in that context. We have our constitution there. I'll just show you a real small sample of an organization chart we developed, just kind of visualize how we are currently set up and how we're transitioning under the constitution. We have some good demographics information that is going to be continually updated with the census figures. In the budget overview, you have a lot of the information from our budget transmittal letter from the chief budget officer and administrator. But I'll just make a comment here, something that might be a shortcoming for the county to make application for this award right now is the strategic plan. We made some, you know, general comments there, and I know Presiding Commissioner Nolte and others have spoken about, you know, looking to develop something like that. And why that is important is ultimately you want to develop a budget that ties back to that strategic plan and everything we do. And so that might be an opportunity, something with, when our new administrator comes on, that we can have discussions and really make that application. But other things there, we pulled from the budget transmittal letter again, and also noted some short-term and long-term financial factors, such as our property taxes and, you know, current trends. In the fund summaries, you can essentially see just some information, really gives you a good grasp, and a lot of graphics, so it's not just a bunch of numbers, it's something that you can really visually depict. And the budget team spent, you know, plenty of hours on this, and so, you know, I really want to thank them for all their work, and it's something that we'll continue to update as we go forward. But, you know, just something here, for instance, on the major fund category, you can see, you know, a breakdown by type, something of note here, personnel costs in the county make up, you know, 40% of our expenditures. That's a little bit lower, maybe than some other peer governments, and our contractual is 40%. So those are some real key data points that you as policymakers can utilize, feel like. You know, look at just our general fund, and you can see something that I've noted before, if you go all the way to the bottom here, the improvement in our fund balance you see from 2018, cash, you know, fell, and then, because of low spending and high revenues in 2021, we jumped back up. So that's just a kind of a positive there, thing that we can see with real data. Funding sources, just talks about all of our revenue sources, of course, you know, grants, fees, taxes. The department section, you can really drill down into each department, I'll pick on our assessor, Tracy Baldwin. I don't know if he's here tonight. But I asked each department to give us some goals as well, to essentially tie back into the county's overall vision, and that's a key element in the GFOA criteria. In fact, I'll go ahead and pass this out real quick. And that's just something for the Commissioners to see what all is involved with getting this award. But one of that, the strategic plan, and then the department goals, all tie into it. They're supposed to have specific metrics that can be measurable, and they did a great job of providing that to us. And so that's something that, again, we're at a very early starting stage here, but this is, you know, how we're going to get started. We have the capital improvements, all the requests, gives us a real beginning template for a capital improvement plan, and we have our long-term, our debt, and again, I'll make note, just kind of, you can see in graphics how county's really done a good job of reducing our debt, thanks to the actions of the commission. So that's really that interactive website. I will note, however, if you go to that homepage again, you can see a PDF. It is, right here, we have the actual PDF. Now, it's 800 pages, so I did not print one out for you tonight, but it is hyperlinked, which is a requirement, so you can search it, you can, you know, click on the page number, rather than what we currently have, where you have to scroll through, flip through, but this can be a very good, useful tool. So that's just a real high-level overview of that Digital Budget Book, not to take too much time, but again, we just wanted to present that to the commission, to just continue to show how we are striving towards making improvements here in Clay County.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. I'm very, I'm amazed, it's such a professional, such a great job that you did, and of course the budget team and the people in the different departments certainly appreciate and are thankful to all the, everyone who has been involved in putting this together. I think this increases our transparency, which is something that we here on this commission have been, I think, making good progress towards, and this is yet another step towards achieving the highest degree of transparency possible. I like the idea that it is so user-friendly. It's one thing to disseminate information, if you're just going to have rows and rows of numbers, that's very difficult for, at least for myself, to grasp, and I've got to think a number of people are in that position. Having the ability to see graphs and to see a more user-friendly kind of a format is certainly something I think our citizens are going to appreciate. And just to repeat, the site where the hyperlink is, is claycountymo.gov. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner, and from that home site, you can see our transparency portal, which will house a lot of information as well as this Digital Budget Book.
Okay. Open it up for discussion among the Commissioners. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. No, I will just reiterate here with Commissioner Nolte that this was, it was very lovely, and I think it is very user-friendly, and I love that it is just another element of transparency here in Clay County. My question is, what other counties use something like this, the ClearGov application? Are we kind of a frontrunner here? Is this a well-used platform already, or?
That's a great question, and I think that's really a goal the budget team as well, is just to essentially make us on that peer level with our larger counties here in Missouri and across the nation. So I'd say that, you know, I've seen, I can count on my, you know, my hand how many there are who have this distinguished budget presentation award in their, you know, the larger first-class counties. I would say like some other fellow auditors I'd look up to in Green County and Boone County, for instance, I can think of, and St. Charles. So I'd have to see if any of the others, but to my knowledge, those are some that, you know, for certainly have had those for quite a while. And, you know, a lot of cities get this, a lot of school districts, so it's just a good, you know, good local government practice.
No, thank you. I love it. I think it's wonderful, and everybody did a great job on it, and all the other elected office holders, and all your staff, so, no, I love it. Keep it going.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I just totally agree. Grateful to you and the team for making it happen, and it is a thing that Commissioner Nolte has mentioned before, returning to making these documents searchable so that somebody's actually looking for information, they can get to it. You know, when you have so much data, if it's not searchable, it ultimately becomes, in a way, pretty useless, and so I think that's a huge, a huge change, so thank you to the team.
And I think you were saying that once we are, assuming we go forward with the tentative plans to put together strategic plans, this is another way for us to communicate to citizens and taxpayers where we are, where we intend the county to go as a government, and to keep them informed, to make sure that they are, have the ability to make, give some input on how we operate. So that's, I think this is great progress, and I look forward to, the only, the only real downside is I don't see how you keep topping yourself each time, but we look forward to seeing yet more good things. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none. That concludes our discussion on the Digital Budget Book. Thank you, Mr. Auditor. That brings us to our second item, meeting schedule, which is, I think, a commission item. If you would lead us in once again, Administrator?
Yes, so this was brought to us by the commission here for, to change up the format for when we have called-upon meetings that have a rather abbreviated subject matter rather than all the things that we currently go through. So I will turn it over to you guys for discussion.
So I was asked to put this on. We've had a request.
Oh, go ahead and identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin Graham, County Counselor. Right now, it appears that we may be stumbling into a bit of a conflict with the Wednesday 2:00 start time, and I guess the question is, would a 3:00 start time work for everyone starting with this week from today, 3:00, as the ongoing Wednesday start time for work sessions?
It works for me, yes, thank you.
You have it.
No, thank you, Counselor. That's, I think that summed it up. So I've been reached out to personally, saying that maybe a little later start time would not be a bad thing for the commission. I know we currently do with 6:00 PM, but I hate to move all of our meetings yet to the evening, but I know it is, it is difficult for citizens to make it here to see our meetings and be part of it, and I know a lot of them, since we do live stream, they get to see that, but with, and also with our meetings and schedules within the week, maybe moving it back an hour would, would help facilitate just getting here and being prepared a little easier, but.
I think that's a great idea. I like that a lot. It preserves what the idea behind having every other meeting, one being during daytime hours, in this case proposed at 3:00, and then the meetings at 6:00 PM. That way, any citizen, regardless of their work schedule, has the opportunity to come forth and to be heard on a subject. And I got to tell you, one of the great things about right now, I don't know that the folks who are viewing this, but we have a pretty full room right now, and that is very encouraging, that we are able to do that, because that means people are interested, they're involved, and it's a little, it's a lot more encouraging when you're not sitting here, and it's just those of us here at the table, and there's nobody present, that's, you know, we would like to think that people take an interest in what we do, and tonight, obviously, they do, and we're just happy that we've got some variety of scheduling, so everybody, regardless of their work schedule or other schedules, has at least a decent opportunity to be able to attend a meeting on any subject, because we do, we hear everything twice, as much as we can practically do. Mr. Counselor, I don't, is there any ordinance or any resolution related to this?
I think as long as there's consensus from the commission to start our work sessions, our Wednesday work sessions at 3:00, beginning with this coming Wednesday, February 2nd, and then give direction to staff to make that happen, it'll happen.
Do we have consensus to go forward with that?
Mm-hmm.
Very well. I might also recommend that we put out maybe an additional notice of some sort, so that people don't assume, but with that caveat, I think we're in, I think we're in agreement to go forward with that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
That concludes the meeting schedule discussion. That brings us to public hearings, there aren't listed. We now go to our consent agenda. Once again, for the benefit of those who might not have attended a meeting before, the consent agenda are items that we have heard, and they either generated no controversy, where they both had to both not generate controversy, and they needed to not have a fiscal note, in other words, a cost to the county. Having achieved those two, those two requirements, items are eligibility put on the consent agenda, and any commissioner can have an item moved from consent to regular agenda at any time, including right now, before we take the vote, but just wanted to kind of give everybody sort of a little primer on how we're proceeding here. With that, is there a motion related to tonight's consent agenda?
Commissioner, I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the consent agenda. Discussion?
Thank you.
Any comment from the public? Seeing none, Commissioner, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular agenda. Those are items that we have heard, and this will be the second time we've heard them. I know that we're going to be having some comments on some of these subjects. I would just remind or inform, depending on your situation, any citizen who would care to comment, please make those comments when the item comes up, and I'll be asking for comments from the public. When you, when you do want to make a comment, please go to the podium there, make sure the little ring is green rather than red, try to speak clearly into the microphone, and because we are also doing audio recordings, if you could identify yourself before proceeding, that would be great. With that, we will begin with 2022-28. Administrator?
2022-28 is a request from the Carney Fire and Rescue Protection District for some ARPA funding for some specialty equipment, and we have our county auditor Victor Hurlbert here to speak.
Please proceed.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor. So just a reminder, we heard this in our work session, but Resolution 2022-28 is an American Rescue Plan Act request from the Carney Fire and Rescue Protection District in the amount of $114,215.95 for a number of ambulance equipment items that essentially help them prevent and mitigate the spread of COVID-19 among patients, and then also for the firefighters themselves. So it is, again, been reviewed and deemed eligible. It's from our, according to the final rule, it's from our COVID response account, and there is sufficient budget for it, and we also verified how they cover both unincorporated Clay County and incorporated Carney, and they have already received, you know, some COVID stimulus from the city as well. Other than that, we do have the fire chief. Mr. Pratt is here, if there are any questions, and other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions on the auditor?
No, thank you.
We see none, so yes, Chief, if you'd like to say, you don't need to, but certainly we always like hearing from you.
Kevin Pratt, Fire Chief for the Carney Fire District. Just want to thank you for entertaining our request, and if you do have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Or comments? Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Are there any comments from anyone in the public? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2022-28?
I'll make a motion to approve 2022-28.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-28. Discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner, so I just want to say I fully support this funding, and, you know, I think this is exactly the type of item that was intended to be funded through these funds, and I'm, you know, grateful to the folks who protect our communities, including the Fire Protection District there in Carney. You know, we are now, as the Commissioners know, getting inundated with a lot of requests for funds, and obviously, we're not going to be able to accommodate all of those. I think this is a perfect example of one that does make sense to put these funds toward. But as we get, you know, sort of increasingly inundated with, especially requests from private for-profit businesses, for example, that just, you know, that I think we're not going to be able to accommodate, or at least, you know, I don't think we'll have my support, but this is one that fully does, and glad that we can help out the folks there in Carney.
Thank you. From our discussion last week, it seemed very obvious that this not only is a protective measure for the emergency responders, it also has, helps to ease the shortage of personnel that are required, cuts it possibly in half, and it also makes it much safer for those that are, that you are rendering service to. So I mean, it's a win all the way around, and as Commissioner Carpenter said, I mean, this is pretty much kind of a poster child for what is the appropriate use of these funds. Commissioner Thompson?
No, I just agree with you all that this is a very worthy cause, and definitely fills the criteria of what ARPA funding is, so I'm happy to move forward with this.
And you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to 2022-13. Administrator?
2022-13 is a request from our Facilities Department. It is for a term and supply contract for Kelller Fire and Safety for Fire Extinguisher Services, and Building Services Manager Melanie Watt is here to speak.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. Melanie Watt, Building Services Manager. 2022-13 is for approval of term and supply contract for fire extinguisher inspections. The service ensures that all of our fire extinguishers are routinely inspected and found in working order.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
No questions, thanks.
Any, are there any questions or comments from anyone in the public? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2022-13?
Commissioner, I move that we approve 2022-13.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-13. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-14. Administrator?
2022-14 is also a request from our Facilities Department. It is to approve a term and supply contract for services for lawn from grass action. Melanie Watt, our Building Services Manager, is still here to speak.
Please proceed.
Melanie Watt, Building Services Manager. 2022-14 is for approval of a term and supply agreement for lawn care services. This covers routine lawn care, landscaping, and irrigation system management for various county properties.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Or comments?
No, thanks.
Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2022-14?
I'll make a motion to approve 2022-14.
Discussion?
No discussion.
Please, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-31. Administrator?
2022-31 is also a request from our Facilities Department. It is for approval of waste management services for, from two vendors, for our parks and our main campus areas. Building Services Manager Melanie Watt is here.
Please proceed.
Melanie Watt, Building Services Manager. 2022-31 is for approval of term and supply contract for waste disposal services. When we put this out to bid, we had three responses, and we would like to split this bid between two of the responders that were the lowest and best for services throughout the county.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments?
No questions, thanks.
Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2022-31?
Commissioner, I move that we approve 2022-31.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-31. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-22. A lot of twos in that one.
2022-22 and 2022-23 are companion items for Luciana Point for a rezoning and a preliminary plat. Our, Kip Jones, our Planning and Zoning Director, is here to address.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is the rezoning of preliminary plat for Luciana Point. This proposal is located at H Highway and Stockdale Road. It's the old Liberty Hills Golf Club. The proposal is for 18 lots that range anywhere from five acres to 22 acres. I have the plat pulled up on the screen. It would include a new interior street, actually, two new interior streets in cul-de-sacs off of Stockdale Road. H Highway is to the south. Some of the lots would have access off the interior street. If the lot abuts that interior street, that's where its access would be. A few of the lots do have access off of Stockdale Road, and three of the lots have access off of H Highway. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals for the entrances, the street location, and all the accesses from both MoDOT and the Clay County Highway Department. You know, we discussed this case pretty in detail last week, so I don't have really any new information. I will add that the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Thank you very much. It's not really a question, but more of a comment, that these are all in excess of five acres, all the lots?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Jones?
No, thank you.
Would the applicant care to say anything?
Robert DeLaForte, who's Star Development, I'm, just wanted to make myself available for any questions or comments. I have my civil here with me as well.
Are there any further questions or comments from the commission?
No.
Are there any comments from anyone from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2022-22 and 2022-23?
I'll make a motion to approve 2022-22 and 2022-23.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-22, 2022-23. Discussion? Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-22, 2022-23. Discussion?
No discussion.
You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item, which are also companion items. 2022-26, 2022-27. Administrator?
2022-26 and 2022-27 are both for Eagle View. Again, it is a zoning and preliminary plat, and Kip Jones, our Planning and Zoning Director, is here to speak.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is the rezoning and preliminary plat for Eagle View. I've got the plat pulled up on the screen. It is located off of A Highway and 124th Street. This proposal is for 10 lots on the 46 acres. They range roughly from about three and a half acres to seven and a half acres each. A cul-de-sac would be stubbed through the Bedford's Downs subdivision for access to five of the lots, and then one to two of the lots would use the existing access off of A Highway. The other lots would have access off of 124th Street. Again, we discussed this case at last week's county commission meeting. I have not received any new or additional information that we didn't discuss last week. I will add the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to approve with a vote of five to zero with the conditions that we discussed last week. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Are there any questions from Mr. Jones or comments?
No, thank you.
If the applicant is present and would like to speak, they are certainly welcome to at this time.
Steve Warder, 6127 Northwest Pine Ridge Circle, Parkville, Missouri, representing the developer. We're in agreement with the conditions here to answer other questions. And I might point out, we did get, I think the last time we took it, we had a draft letter from Indiana, our approval of septic. We've got that final letter now that we have received.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions may have.
Thank you for that update. Are there any questions or comments of Mr. Warder?
No, thank you.
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none. Is there a motion related to 2022-26, 2022-27?
Commissioner, I move that we approve 2022-26 and 27.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-26, 2022-27. Discussion?
No, thank you.
Seeing none. You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. We are going to take up the issue that I believe a lot of you folks are here to discuss. You've kind of seen how we have sort of proceeded through these, so I think you guys have an idea of what the procedure is like. So once we've gone through sort of the initial discussion, I will ask the applicant to first give it, to stand for questions and give any information. At that point, we will be looking to have persons come forward. We're not necessarily going to have pro and con separated out. So what I would like folks to do is to, where that occupancy limited 65, if you could kind of line up along there and queue up so that you can then be able to, in an orderly fashion, come forward and make your comments. Please remember to make sure the green light is on, identify yourselves, and speak clearly into the microphone. Since we have a lot of people here, certainly you are absolutely free to say whatever your opinion is on this subject. If it's possible to have something that's maybe slightly different than, you know, so it's not terribly repetitious, but if you want to say the same thing, you're absolutely free to make, you know, whatever comments related that you want to. I'm just thinking in terms of making sure we get everybody through in a timely manner, and everybody gets to express their opinion. So with that, we will begin with 2022-24, 2022-25. Administrator?
2022-24, 2022-25 are companion items for Eastern Estates, a rezoning and preliminary plat. And Kip Jones, the Planning and Zoning Director, is here to speak.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is the rezoning and preliminary plat for Eastern Estates. Have the plat pulled up on the screen. This proposal is for a total of 22 lots, lots ranging in the size from about .6 acres to the large lot, Lot 22 with the existing house and pond, is roughly 12 acres. It is located off 132nd Street to the south and northeastern to the east. This proposal would include two new interior streets that end in cul-de-sacs. The one update that I have for this case is we did receive a letter of support for the case today, and I think Brandy either has or will hand out that letter of support. But we, as with the two previous cases, we discussed this case last week. I don't have any new information to add. The last item I would add is the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend denial of this case, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Are there any questions from the commission of Mr. Jones?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
So Mr. Jones, you provided a lot of helpful information, both orally and in the written documents here. So I've just got a little bit of a process question. You stated previously that staff had the recommendation to approve. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission, obviously, on a five-o vote, went the other direction for denial. So my question is, with all of the information we have, much of which was, you know, all of which was provided from you, why don't we have more information from the Planning and Zoning Commission in terms of their explanation for the decision? Just in terms of what the history is of why that isn't part of the package of information?
So that's a very good question. So depending on the case, there can be a lot of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission as to why they approve or disapprove something. In this case, there was not a lot of discussion between the members as to why they voted the way they did. Generically, I would say any rezoning and plating has approval criteria that the applicant must show that they meet. So I would generically answer that the Planning and Zoning Commission did not feel that the applicant showed that they met those criteria.
I appreciate that. You know, it's just that, you know, you all went into great detail with every component piece here in terms of what does and does not meet the code. And I just, you know, it would be helpful, obviously, to have sort of some of the reasoning behind the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I, you know, I'm sure my fellow commissioners feel the same way, that I, you know, my default position is to, is to take their recommendation. But, you know, it makes it a bit more challenging when we have a lot of information from staff in terms of what does and does not match up, and then we, you know, essentially just have one paragraph saying the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended denial. But that, during your tenure here, this is not uncommon for the Planning and Zoning Commission to not have additional information explaining their decision?
That's correct. Now, I can circle back with county council and see if that's something that we should consider changing. But we, depending on how much discussion they have, I'm kind of limited as to what I can provide in the report if there's not a lot of discussion.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Thompson?
I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
With that, does the, would the applicant care to speak?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there we are.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Melissa VanCrom with Rouse Fretz White-Goss Law Firm, 4510 Bellevue Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri, 64111. I'm here today representing the applicant, Mr. Richard Gurkin, who lives on the property that is subject to the application. And since he is a neighbor to many of those that you may hear from tonight, I would like to introduce him to say a few words while I get my computer hooked up to show you a presentation over there.
Certainly.
Hello. My name is Richard Gurkin. I live at 13300 Northeastern Avenue, Smithville, Missouri, which is the parcel of property that, 33 acres, proposed development for Eastern Estates. I bought the acreage in 2003 with the intent to divide off what I consider to be my extra property. I am not a property developer. I am a property owner that seeks to redevelop the property where I live. I also own a business here in Liberty, operating a construction business, an RV park, and investment properties since 1981. Again, I'd like to thank the Clay County Planning and Zoning Staff, Art Aiken with AGC Engineers, Jim Bowers, and Melissa VanCrom with Rouse Fretz White-Goss Gentile Roads for their help in the creation and promotion of my Eastern Estates project. Eastern Estates is planned to be a high-end private community consisting of 21 lots, approximately eight tenths of an acre in size, plus significant green space and surrounding open acreage. The price point will begin at what is now the top end of the average home values. Once completed, Eastern Estates will be the premier private community in the area. As I said, I currently live on the property and will be the largest adjoining neighbor. It is my intent to create optimum living for 21 new lots while promoting the beauty and harmony of the Northeastern Avenue area. The topic that came up about Planning and Zoning Commission, they didn't discuss the project at all. It was presented, they heard opposition from the surrounding neighbors, and that was their vote. They didn't discuss it, they didn't look into the facts, and we're here to present the actual facts of the relevant codes and how the project got to the approval status from the Planning and Zoning Department. It does meet all the criteria for the Land Development Code, and it merits approval as the Planning and Zoning Staff recommended.
Thank you, Richard. Also with us today is Art Aiken of AGC Engineers Incorporated and my colleague Jim Bowers.
By the way, just, I didn't mean to interrupt, but are the commissioners okay with just hearing the entire presentation and then asking questions? If you have questions during the time that we proceed, is that okay for us to maybe stop you and ask a question?
That's fine with me. Yes.
Okay. So commissioners, if you have a question that requires kind of an immediate response, certainly go ahead and get my attention. We'll go ahead and ask a question at that time. But other than that, we will have you finish your presentation and ask any questions that, at the end that we might have.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I also have several exhibits that we'd like to introduce into the record. If it's all right with you, I'll hand those over afterwards. It's the Land Development Code, the Comprehensive Plan, the application, staff reports, and some communication from Timber Creek Sewer Company.
And I just want to indicate for the audio record that county council has nodded in approval, so we're good.
We'll get the record put together.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see, and as you've heard from staff, we're requesting approval of a rezoning and a preliminary plat from RU1A to RU25, and then RU1 for just Lot 22. The subject property is just over a mile from the Kansas City, Missouri city limits. You've heard a little bit of background now, but there is a long history. Mr. Gurkin has tried to subdivide this property for many years. There was actually an approved preliminary plat and plan, and final plan on two, for nine, three-lot acres that was on septic that was approved in 2007. So there's ultimately only 12 new lots from that proposal being proposed today. That plan has expired, and that is the reason that we are presenting a new plan now. The previous plans proposed by my client were also opposed by neighbors, many of the same neighbors, and that includes even the three-acre lot that was previously approved. But a lot has changed in that time, and that is part of why you see a different proposal today. Developments continued in the area, including Johnson Ridge to the north. That was originally slated for 104 units, and there's a number of other subdivisions that have been plotted in the surrounding area. Certain things haven't changed, like continued opposition of some of the same neighbors and now some new ones. Mr. Walcott submitted a petition opposing Johnson Ridge that, he said, was signed by 255 residents. Neighbors raised the exact same concerns, but now call Johnson Ridge a quality, comfortable-sized development. Neighbor's fears about Johnson Ridge were not realized, yet now they've brought in Johnson Ridge neighbors to oppose with the same claims and fears about this development. Key, really key to understanding the change in conditions here is that the county has adopted a new comprehensive plan and a new land development code significantly amended since the adjacent development occurred. Previously, the plan and code required a three-acre minimum in this area, and now the plan and code clearly disfavor that large-size development and actually require municipal-level services. Now, another key is that your decision today must be made on the plan and code. The drafters of the Comprehensive Plan in 2008 recognize the pressure that you're under when you face significant neighbors, emotional and sometimes fear-based concerns about development that's happening in the area. This is particularly true in urban fringe areas and rural areas. But for that reason, there are standards in the code to guide your decision-making process. Without using these factors, it's very easy for the decision-making to be derailed through emotions. Now, the proposed development today is consistent with the code and the Comprehensive Plan. Staff believes it's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan due to the size that it is a moderate-sized development that is proposing municipal-level services. There was no discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission before the vote, as you've heard. There were just a couple of questions about how Johnson Ridge feels about the wastewater connection, which is not a relevant factor for consideration. So we can only guess as to what factors were used. The staff recommendation of approval remains unchanged. The code provides that the rezoning shall be consistent, shall be considered consistent with the Comprehensive Plan if it is consistent with the planning tier map, and that is what you see here. The salmon color, peach color that covers the entire map is the urban fringe area, the urban services tier, I'm sorry. That actually provides for up to four lots per acre, which is significantly more dense than what is proposed today, and it provides that such areas should be reserved for urban development irrespective of timeframes. The proposed development meets the development standards as confirmed by county staff, with paved private roads, stormwater using natural streams and ponds, wastewater provided on a municipal-level system, and water provided by the public system. As noted, the Comprehensive Plan has changed the policy. Large lots not only are disfavored, the Comprehensive Plan notes that two-to-three-acre lots without connection to municipal-level services is detrimental to the long-term economic health of the county. The plan goes on to list some of the very specific problems that result from this type of development and why this change has occurred, which is why you will see a difference from the development that exists in the area today. This includes environmental reasons, toll on water quality and natural resources, social issues such as the neighbor conflicts that you're seeing today that are opposing the inevitable change that comes to these areas, public service issues, feasibility and cost of having the extensions made when you've put in three-acre lots on septic nearby, inhibiting urban growth and redevelopment, and stymying economic development. Mr. Rucker, a real estate broker, testified at Planning and Zoning how there is currently just a one-month inventory of homes available in Clay County. Demand is high for this type of housing, yet at the same time, there are projects in the queue that will produce over 6,000 new jobs in the county over the next four to five years. So this demand will remain high. This policy is a big shift from the prior plan and code, and so that's why I think it is very important to understand that. The proposal meets the purpose and intent of the Land Development Code. It's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, as we've discussed. There are numerous subject matter experts in the county and county agencies and regional agencies used by the county that have reviewed and provided approval to date, and there will be additional review and approval prior to the development. Efficiency and service provision and fiscal resources is ensured by development with municipal-level services. There will be significant increase in taxes paid by these additional homes in addition to the direct fees paid. This is This is code-compliant development, and it's just beyond one mile of Kansas City, Missouri city limits, adjacent to residential development, and it is not scattered development. It meets the criteria for rezoning approval. It meets changing conditions in the area surrounding it, consistent with Johnson Ridge to the north and development to the south, which is just one mile from the city. It helps to meet demand for homes that supports economic development. It's consistent with the changed Comprehensive Plan and zoning code, as noted on the previous slides, which require a more dense development pattern with connection to municipal-level services. The three-acre lot on septic that neighbors have said they'd prefer from the prior plan is no longer an option on these lots. The proposed development is compatible with surrounding uses and zoning. These adjacent uses are also single-family homes. Compatible is not the same thing as identical. Single-family residential is inherently compatible with single-family residential. The appropriate agencies for sewer, water, fire, roads, and planning have all reviewed and responded positively to the development complying with code and the ability of existing services to support it. And despite what you will hear today, this development will not significantly impact property in the vicinity or of an environment. Other development has incurred, such as Johnson Ridge, that was objected to and now is called quality development. The development is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, which is designed to mitigate such impacts, and buffers proposed will further limit impact. This next slide is the preliminary plat, so you can see the layout proposed. The access is to the south on 132nd Street. Mr. Gurkin's existing property is the large lot adjacent that you can see in the northwest corner, so he will actually be the main neighbor closest and impacted by this development. The green represents the 50-foot open space buffer surrounding the exterior lots, where staff has recommended as a condition additional landscaping be planted, and there is the additional dry detention that you can see on the corner of Eastern and 132nd. The adjacent lots are compatible. You can see here that there are just two lots that will be adjacent, maybe there's two lots in this development and maybe two to three that are on Johnson Ridge that will actually be adjacent to these new lots. And those lots on Johnson Ridge are about 1.19 acres each. The lots adjacent to them will be just about one acre. There will also be the 50-foot buffer on this side, and then there's a buffer on the Johnson Ridge side as well, so the homes will be over 100 feet apart at a minimum. That's just the green space that's required. There will also be additional trees added. To the west, there's an existing tree buffer that you can see a little bit here, but will show clearer, and that's actually an existing mature tree buffer that will be added to, and a 50-foot buffer will exist there. And the smaller slots are actually adjacent to Mr. Gurkin's property, interior to the development. The neighbors have raised a number of concerns. These are generalized concerns that have already been addressed by the county's own experts. These include density, traffic, stormwater, wastewater, and water pressure. As to density, this proposal adds 12 lots from the prior-approved development, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code, which were adopted after the prior-approved developments adjacent. The prior plan approved nine lots of three acres, also opposed by the neighbors as being too small. The average lot size is not that different from Johnson Ridge. The green space buffer, as noted, will further minimize impact with the added landscaping and mature trees. And again, as the applicant lives there, he will be motivated to make sure it is a good neighbor. The revision that neighbors have noted could add more lots under the existing code and plan would require county approval. Traffic is an issue raised, but the Clay County Highway Department has already reviewed, noting that the access point has a good site distance and that no traffic study is required. So the agency in charge of review of traffic issues does not see a significant impact on traffic. The existing traffic safety concerns of neighbors will not be exacerbated by this development. As to stormwater, a preliminary stormwater mitigation plan has been provided, and a final stormwater plan will be provided to be reviewed and approved by the county. Additional approval will be required by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and by the county, and a stormwater pollution prevention plan will be required, which will require federal, state, and local compliance. The grading and erosion control plan has also been submitted and reviewed and will be part of the stormwater plan that is updated as well prior to construction, to be reviewed. Wastewater is an issue that a lot of noise has been made of on this project. The same was true when Johnson Ridge came in. One thing that I want to clear up is that Timber Creek is a private entity. It is neither owned nor operated by Johnson Ridge. They are a private entity that is licensed by the state, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, and regulated by the Public Service Commission. They are required to comply with state and federal law and are experts in managing these systems. They've operated for over two decades, including this plant for over a decade. Timber Creek says it has the capacity and will still be about 50% of its capacity. They have the ability to expand, but it won't be required for this development. Those communications are in the staff report, and they're also in the exhibits that we'll be submitting here. If anything, the cost burden to users should be reduced, as should be obvious when you divide the cost across an additional 21 users. So this simply is not an issue. It's far bigger issue if you have septic on a bunch of individual lots in terms of public safety concerns. Water, the Water District has reviewed and said it can serve the development. The additional approval of the Water District will be required prior to development. Water pressure concerns raised by neighbors will not be impacted by the development, and these concerns were also raised to try to stop Johnson Ridge from development. The Smithville Area Fire Protection District has also reviewed and provided comments and can support the development. The proposal's compliance with the county code and plan and staff's recommendation of approval provide competent evidence for approval, but the neighbors' general concerns are not reasonable grounds for denial. The decision must comply with the existing code and plan. Courts at the state and federal level have clearly stated that decisions based on general concerns of adjacent property owners are not a valid basis for denial. The opposition to date is a tiny fraction of the county population, which is not the same as the public interest, which is critical in these court cases to understand. There is no development that would satisfy some adjacent neighbors. The very neighbors have opposed development time and time again using the same generalized concerns, which would stop any kind of development. But the very neighbors objecting were the change when they arrived, whether it was one year ago or 60 years ago. At one point, this property, over 400 acres, well beyond this property, including Johnson Ridge, was Bickelmeier Land and Cattle. You can see here just a view of the change that's happened from a staff report in July 2007 to the staff report here in the area. The circled area is the land we're talking about here. You can see a number of subdivisions that have happened in these, just on this land and in the land immediately surrounding it, and to the southeast. Many of those lots are three acres because that's what the old plan and code required as a minimum, but that has changed. Today, you have to go south just one and a half miles to the city limits to find lots that are one-fifth of an acre in size. This proposal is four-plus times that size, so this is not an urban development. It is compatible with the adjacent uses. It complies with the code and plan in place today. We request your approval, and we agree with staff's recommended conditions and staff's recommendation of approval. We thank you for your time, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. I notice on page six of eight, Exhibit A, it has a number of conditions. The paragraph preceding it is basically, "Planning and zoning commissioner's final vote was 5 to 0 to 0 to recommend denial," and some other stuff. However, if the county commission votes to approve, staff recommendations approving with the following conditions as shown on Exhibit A. Is the applicant okay, I guess, with the items under Exhibit A? And I believe there are some 15?
Yes, we are in agreement with staff's recommended conditions of approval.
Okay. Any further questions from Commissioner?
I have no questions, thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Very well. Does the applicant have any further comments to make beyond the presentation?
Not at this time. We'd ask to provide rebuttal later on, but no further comments at this time.
Very good. If anyone would like to comment on this, this issue, please, as I say, queue up over there where the occupancy limit 65 is. When you come forward, please identify yourself and speak clearly into the microphone. Please go right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephen Walcott, 204 East Kansas, Liberty, Missouri. I'm here tonight as the attorney for the DeCosta family and also Johnson Ridge HOA. I'm not going to make a complete presentation tonight. You've already heard it. You heard this last week, so I'm not going to do that again. I would reiterate one thing. The 2008 Comprehensive Plan, at the time that was being discussed, it seemed pretty likely that Kansas City was going to continue to expand on north. I mean, that seemed to be a pretty general consensus, and I think everyone has, was emphasized many times by applicant's attorney, the current city limits are more than a mile away from this, and as I indicated previously, we don't see any indication that Kansas City has any intention of expanding further at this particular time. They've got their own problems at this time to deal with, and so on. So I would ask tonight that the commission consider the record that was presented at the Planning and Zoning, which was Exhibit B, which were the signatures of people opposed and some letters, including at least one resident that was out of the county at this time, also the letter that Assistant County Counselor has now, just in case you don't have it, that I presented last week, from the Johnson Ridge HOA that's also opposing it, and the other testimony that was offered at your work session last week. Compatible has been used a lot in the presentation that applicant's attorney just made. My client and Johnson Ridge disagrees with that idea of compatibility. This proposal is so much more concentrated than anything in the area with the farms, with the larger area. Even Johnson Ridge, with it being a conservation district, has a lot of open areas. Here, we're talking about primarily lots that are just over a half acre. You know, this is a city development. This is what we see in the subdivisions and so on. This is what we see just over a mile south. So I would ask, again, just reiterate what I've already said, not going to say it again tonight, on behalf of Mr. DeCosta and his family that lives directly west of this, Johnson Ridge HOA that lives directly north of this, I would ask that you deny the application inconsistent with what the Planning and Zoning determined, denying at 5:0, and then be denied as basically not being compatible with the current development in adjacent areas around this particular development. And with that, if you have any questions, otherwise, that's all I have to say tonight. I'm sorry to believe that for an attorney.
Questions?
No questions.
Or comments? Let's please, it's going to be here long enough. I want to have everybody get their chance. If we start doing outbursts, it's just going to make the evening go longer, but it will not add to the information and the ability of citizens to make their opinions known. I just want to also say, because the applicant had requested some time to rebut, I think what I would like to do is to wait until we hear everyone else speak, and then if you would at that time care to have some time to rebut, then we'll go for that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next citizen, please.
My name is Mary Stevenson, and it may be, you've heard me before, but when I hear her talking about it today, it just kind of riles me up. I want to talk again, okay? My name is Mary Stevenson. I'm the owner of the property at 13315 Northeastern. It's a 50-acre tract, when we bought it in 1969, of land directly east, just across the road from the property you are considering. We are the next-door neighbors to what is identified as Eastern Estates, and as such, we speak as the ones most directly affected by the changes that may result from your deliberations. As a family of six, we moved to Eastern Estates, to Eastern Road in 1969. It was a rural area. It was open spaces, large tracts of land, enjoyable country living, but changes came as we knew they would. We knew there would be changes, and we've had lots of them. So with much planning, discussions, meetings involving many people, the Eastern Road corridor has been developed as we now know it. Cary Hills, Valley Brook, Johnson Ridge. We had lots of discussions on each and every one of these. They're comfortably-sized residential areas of rural character, nearby companions to farms, small hobby ones as well as quite large ones. Now comes a rezoning district request to allow the RU-25 with urban large lots for this district strikes me as ironic, because these are very small lots. Little more than one-half acre in size compared to the three-acre size held to be desirable in Clay County's Comprehensive Plan, or the one-to-five-acre lots in the nearby divisions. The possible results, as I look at this, is 21 lots with streets, sidewalks, houses, families of adults and children, their pets, a couple of cars, maybe three, a boat or a cycle tucked alongside. In short, I see a lot of activity in a constricted area causing problems and devaluing my property. After the obvious density, there is this watershed control. Now, 21 roofs with roads, driveways, sidewalks mean a lot of runoff, runoff that will flow into a creek that bisects by property, where erosion and flooding will be a big headache. Retention pools, their size, and their future maintenance is a concern, as are the questions of environmental impact from the sewage disposal and the maintenance of their treatment facilities. And I do urge you to consider the impact of this on traffic and safety. Eastern is a busy, busy street with increasing businesses and late traffic, much of it without regard to the posted speed limits, with the intersections at 132nd and at 291 Highway are hazardous. If any of you've ever been tried on Eastern and tried to get on the highway, either 291 or 92 with rush hour, good luck. As Eastern Estates matures, the increasing business, personal, and more school bus traffic will mean new burdens for our first responders. And Eastern Road does not even have curbs or shoulders when you come down that highway. And as I thought of it tonight, I think we've seen a lot of changes since 1969 out there. We knew there would be, but we are now on my 50-acre property into the fourth generation of people enjoying it. My daughter has some pictures here of the living style that we like to have. I would kind of like to pass some of them out to you so you could see what you're taking away from us. And it is just a case, I know every homeowner, every landowner has a right to have property and bank money off of it, but I do think it would be necessary that you consider our environment and what we are used to out there, and I don't think it should be taken away from all of us. We get along very well with Cary Hills, Valley Brook, and Johnson Ridge, but this small lot will not be permissible. Thank you for listening.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Next, I'm sorry, did you? Next citizen, please.
Good evening. My name is Margie Richards. We reside at 7610 Northeast 132nd Street. We're obviously directly across from that. One thing I wanted to say is that Richard Gurkin is not the most affected lot, person to be affected by this. We have 50 acres, as my mom said, we have five acres on the other side. Those are a lot bigger tracts, and they're a lot more directly affected, I feel. The previously-approved nine, three-acre lots in 2007, not 21.6-acre lots now. That's a big, big difference. We have, I saw that they said they would have paved roads to paved roads on the cul-de-sacs. Well, that's ironic, since our roads are chip and seal and occasionally oiled. They may be paved inside of their subdivision, but what their majority of their travel is not going to be on 132nd is all going to be chip and seal. I also wanted to ask if Kansas City- I also wanted to ask if Kansas City was, the city of Kansas City was addressed about the traffic study. You said Clay County Highway Department was addressed. The end of Eastern and two ninety-one is Kansas City, and that's where our biggest problem lies, is the Kansas City part of the road. It's almost, like they said, impossible to get out on there now. If you have twenty more lots, I assume that's about three more cars per lot. That's a lot more cars adding to a huge problem already. We do have at least one, one-lane bridge on that strip there. There's no curves, there's no curbs, there's no shoulders or anything like that. We do have a lot of lake traffic for Smithville Lake that goes through there. Also, the fire district apparently has approved and said that they can support it. Like, two years ago, the house directly across from me burnt to the ground before the fire department got there. They were unable to put the fire out, which started outside on a deck. The entire house has burned down since. So I kind of disagree with that conclusion as well. I just strongly oppose to this, and I want to ask your consideration. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Next citizen, please.
Hi. My name is Vlad DeCosta. I'm the sixty-eight eighteen Northeast one hundred and thirty-second Street, the neighbor on the west side of this development. I share a fence line.
Just a moment. Mr. Jones, could you pull up the map as, as people identify where they're at?
Yes, yes, sir.
That might be instructive, if you wouldn't mind.
I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
I'd be happy to do that, but it'll be a minute. I'm not hooked up here yet.
Okay. Sorry about that. I should have thought of that prior. If you'd like to continue with your comments while we get the graphic.
So my lot is a skinny, long, ten-acre lot, stretches north-south. And the property I bought, I came from Iowa originally, escaping from suburban life, trying to find a place where I could live, raise my children, and retire there and pass down the property to my children. So I was looking for the older residents, the same mindset, looking for the countryside, not too far from the city. So I thought I had found that when, four months later, I moved. I moved this past summer. I start receiving, I received the county letter and Mr. Gurken's letter about the development, which, by the way, Mr. Richard Gurken, nothing against you, you're still my neighbor, however, I oppose your development. So that is my property right there. So I and few neighbors, we went around and collected those signatures, was not lawyer, no lawyer involved, was of natural expression of the neighborhood. So I would encourage you to count and read those signatures and call, contact those folks that oppose it, as, as the applicant's lawyer was bringing down our position. So it was quite interesting that she brought up the subject that the most affected lot is the applicant's lot. That's quite funny, that I thought. But no, the most affected lot is mine, as I will have eight immediate houses along my fence line, plus I'll be looking at twenty-two. As I was mentioning before, Mr. Kip was going and turning on his computer, I was going to mention that the house that I bought was sitting unsold for a long time. The previous owner was trying to sell it for a long time, and was unable to sell it because of a Johnson Ridge development right behind, which, as you can see, Mr. Kip, could you highlight my spot, my lot? So my lot right there, yeah, that one, yep. So as you can see, when you use those aerial images, they do not really reflect, truly reflect what it is on the ground. I worked with that. It does not. So if you, if you take a look at where my house is, right there, and look at all those houses right there from Johnson Ridge, they seem far, far away from those remote sensing images. However, I invited you last time, and I invited you again, please come to my home, and I will gladly make you spot, that's not my, that's not, yeah, that's the development. So I'll, I'll lead you to spot all those houses. You won't need, you will not even need my help, by the way, you will see it very easily. So those houses are way closer than what it looks from the satellite image, okay? So they're huge, and no one wanted to buy this acreage, because they were, everybody who wanted to buy it, they were looking for a country lifestyle. And when you look north, you see north, Johnson Ridge is clustered up houses that, from the satellite images, you do not think it is clustered, but I encourage you to go there, and you see how clustered it is. You have a development on the north, like a city on the north side of the property. That's why that property was sitting there. But I had hopes that my neighbors from the west and from the east would not develop, that I would have hopes that the countryside lifestyle would be guaranteed by the, by my east, west, and south neighbors, not by Johnson Ridge. I could just perhaps, you know, fill it up with trees, so I could not see those huge houses up there. So those lots, houses in Johnson Ridge, they are average of one-point-two acres lots. Mr. Richard is proposing lots that vary from one acre to all the way down to point sixty-six acres. This is a suburban lot, a good-sized suburban lot. So imagine twenty-two houses paired up as a wall next to my property, and they claimed that was going to value my property. Who's coming to the countryside looking for a property, right? Will devalue my property, because if I want to sell it, somebody willing to buy will be willing to buy for a country lifestyle, not for a suburban lifestyle. And so he will, his development, doesn't matter how expensive those homes will be listed for, they will devalue my property. So, and so will devalue the properties of my neighbors right here. So Mr. Gurken was very kind to host a neighborhood meeting in, at a local restaurant in December, and I attended that, and I inquired about the buffer. I said, "Mr. Richard, what is your plan for the buffer, as you're going to cluster up twenty-two homes there?" So Mr. Richard stated that he has a few plants going, growing in his backyard, and that he's going to fill in the spots where trees are missing. I would like to highlight that, that tree, that the property line that divides my property with his, is, has roughly fifty-plus trees, and out of those fifty, fifty-plus trees, thirty-four of them are honey locusts. If you're not familiar with honey locusts, they have thorns like this big, and all the branches, and all the trunk. So imagine, which, by the way, I'm scared of having my, allowing my children running too close to the, to the fence line, because it's loaded with honey locusts. So I'm assuming if he's going to put fancy houses there, he would need to bulldoze all those honey locusts right there, otherwise, people will complain that their children, dogs, pets, whatever, will be damaged by, hurt by, by those trees. So if you remove all those honey locust trees, that I counted yesterday, thirty-four of them, out of fifty-plus, so if you remove all those trees, there's no buffer, and he's going to fill up those gaps with his Johnny Appleseed approach, right? You know, one seed at a time. So I do not think that is effective. I would highly recommend, Mr. Neighbor, to choose five-acre lots. I would not be opposed to that.
Go ahead and just, and trial witnesses, address the commission, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So five-acre lots with, with, with a professional landscaping com, company that will put twenty footers along the fence line, that what, what I would recommend suggest to you, my neighbor, and to the committee, so I oppose to the current, the current application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Next citizen, please.
Don Zeller, eighty-two oh nine Northeast one hundred and thirty-second Street. I'm not going to go over the stuff I went over the last time, but there are a few things I would like to bring up. One is this bit about the rezoning and stuff like that. There's, in today's society, there's a lot of disinterest in the government, especially by younger people. Two of you know me, I work with young people all the time, and this is the reason. They come in, they make changes like this that we don't know about or understand, that impact us, and then we have lawyers like this young lady who come and exploit those things and hold them over us, saying, "This is the law. You guys don't have any say in it," or "This is the way the commission has to go." That, that disenchantizes all the citizens. And ma'am, I disagree with your statement.
Well, please, hold on. And again, I'll repeat this again.
Okay.
We are, we are, as a commission, taking testimony, so if all citizens commenting could come, could make their remarks to the commission.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The, she made the statement that we're all opposed to Johnson Ridge. I was not opposed to it, okay? So the statement, her general statement, that we were all opposed to it that are here today, that's not accurate. My thing is, is why is Lot twenty-two held different than all the rest? They say it's part of it, but it's all treated differently. They say they're putting a green buffer around the north side and stuff, yet there's no green buffer on Lot twenty-two. They said all this is going to be tied into a good sewer system. Lot twenty-two is not. They say that the septic system is not a good thing, yet Lot twenty-two is staying on it. The other thing is, is this water pressure. I have water off of that water district, okay? I go out, I hook up a hose, I turn on the spigot, my sprinkler goes, I put a second one on and turn it on, and it go, both of them go, and then stop. There's not enough water pressure, okay? They can put hydrants there, but the hydrants don't do any good if there's not water pressure. Does the fire department have regulations on water pressure at fire hydrants? If so, has that been tested? If they put these hydrants in, and they don't have the pressure, who's on the hook for it? The development, the water district, or the county? Or do they just become pretty ornaments in people's yards? It's a detriment when the fire department shows up. The other thing is, is we have them making statements that everybody has approved this, looking at it. I work with computers, and I know how this goes. I had a computer room that we couldn't keep cool. We would call up the engineers, they would look at the capacity of the air conditioners and say, "You got X number of ton air conditioning, you don't have a problem." All right? Day after day, we would track the temperature, and it'd get hotter and hotter, and we would call them. "You have enough air conditioning, look at the tonnage that you've got." Finally, the system started shutting down. I think that's what we have here. The water district's looking at it, going, "Ah, yeah, we got water out there." The traffic group is looking at it, going, "Yeah, they're just country roads, there shouldn't be any problem with traffic out there." Who has actually gone out and visited and done a study? Who has done the study that says, to see if we can handle these extra cars, like they said, down at two ninety-one? That's a dangerous spot, not here, okay? So I would, if anything, I think that the commission, if they're going to approve this, needs to put some more stipulations on there, you know? What is the city going to expand out there, and does it make sense? Is somebody going to address the issues down at two ninety-one? Who's on the hook for the water, okay? If there's not enough water pressure, who's going to fix that? Okay? And why isn't Lot twenty-two part of this whole thing? Why are they, they like to count it as part of the total, but they keep it separated to the point where, you know, if you, if they, you call up third maps, you'll see the green space. It's not part of Lot twenty-two. And I have nothing against our neighbor there. It just seems to me that this is, you know, an opportunity to make some money, and who knows, he may not be our neighbor after that, because I've done some quick math, total up what you're going to make off this property. With that type of money, I could have a couple of houses down south. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Next citizen, please.
Well, I'm going to make it short and sweet. I forgot my twenty-two-page list again, but I've got several things to say. One of them.
Oh, please, go ahead, identify yourself for the audio recording.
I don't hear.
Your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mine, I don't have my hearing aids in. I forgot them, sir. I'm sorry. I didn't know what you all said all morning, but it must have been good. I'm here, my name is Claude Miller. I'm here with my wife Cynthia. We live at one three oh two-three Northeastern Avenue. And last year, the neighbor across from us bought ten acres. He had it subdivided into three-acre lots. You all made him do it in three-acre lots. They were here for it. We have three, over three acres. My in-laws live right next door to us, to the north. He's ninety-seven, like I said before, she's ninety-four, and we all moved to the country. We sold our house so that we could be next to them and live in the country. And basically, that's all I got to say. I, I really hope that you don't approve this, not because of anybody, other than, I saw a poster up there that said, "Neighbors should not have any influence on your outcome." Well, we all pay taxes, we vote, and I think we have the right that voted before for the three acres. So I don't know if you want me to revote again or what, but anyway, I hope you all deny it, and that's all I got to say. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Questions? No questions?
Thank you very much.
Next citizen?
I'm Marina Pace, and I live at seventy-eight seventeen Northeast one hundred and thirty-second, about a half a mile east of this development. And I know that when the first presentation was made, I heard a lot about meeting minimum requirements, that the engineers came out and said that that pond up there would hold all the water flow. Well, my question is, what's the minimum requirements on that water flow? Does that mean that pond's going to hold it if it's raining one inch and, say, three days? What about the flash flooding that we frequently have out here? And without these houses up here, and even before the other houses were built, we do not handle the flash flooding that we frequently have out here. My house is at a lower elevation than this development here. And at least twice in the last ten years, I have not been able to get to my house because one hundred and thirty-second Street is completely underwater from all the water that flows down from the west, I'm sorry, from the east toward me. My house is, if you look at the curve on one hundred and thirty-second Street, is like, that house right there is mine, okay? So from my neighbor on to the left of that, to where the next curve is, that part of one hundred and thirty-second Street has been completely flooded, the water up halfway up through my driveway from all of the runoff. Now, the creek that he has talked about changing up here at the corner, and said that it will hold the runoff, I can guarantee you, it will not hold the runoff. You follow the flow of that creek, it goes underneath Eastern, past Mr. Johnson's property there on the corner, and Miss Stevenson's property continues flowing down to Stark. Well, guess what? It doesn't end there either, and that creek will flood over the top of Stark, and then you put additional flow off, who knows what's going to happen? The engineers, what did they study? As Mr. Zeller said, what did they study? You follow that creek, and you keep going down, it goes down to a ridiculous bridge on one hundred and thirty-sixth Street that will flood if we have two inches of rain. And Clay County has no intentions of fixing it. They have, this, I think, was four years ago, it was a Friday night, flash flood. I was at a football game in Carney, it's homecoming, look it up. I could not get out of Carney because of the flooding that comes out of that creek further down. When I finally did get out of Carney, I could not get up. get out of Carney, I could not get up Stark, couldn't get home because of all the flooding that comes down, flows that direction. And then after it was all said and done, you get down to 136th Street, that bridge was completely washed out. So, how did the county repair it? Did they put in a bridge? No. They came in with patches, put in more pavement, and left it. So, once again, when that creek floods, it washes out that bridge every single time. And, you know, Fire District said, "Yeah, they can handle that." Well, the house that burned, two houses down from me. I can tell you exactly what happens when a fire happens out here. You guys, I don't know where you all live, what happens in the county when a fire occurs? Carney's fire truck, that fire occurred about 2:00 or 2:30 in the afternoon. Carney's fire truck was the first one to arrive. It was a tanker truck. They came, they set up a swimming pool in the middle of 132nd Street, filled it with water, and they left, because this is not Carney's Fire District. Sometime later, Smithville's truck, finally fire, showed up, okay? We have one fire station that serves all of the Smithville area Fire Protection District. One station, period. Car wrecks, fires, drownings up at the lake, one fire station to handle all of this. They arrived at that scene, the house was fully engulfed, they sprayed the house to the right of that fire, to the left of that fire, and they sat there and watched it burn until about 6 o'clock that night, and then they finally started spraying it. You start cramming more houses closer and closer together out here, what's gonna happen? Are we assuming we're never gonna have another fire? My husband used to be on the Fire Department for Smithville, and he was on it for five years. They call it surround and drown. That's what happens to our houses out here when they catch fire. They surround and drown them, because they cannot respond fast enough to accomplish anything. Smithville's Fire Department is almost 10 miles from this housing addition. Are you going to put everybody's lives on the line out here? Or is he going to be a good neighbor and build a fire department up here and man it? He was claiming he was a good neighbor at the last meeting. Be a good neighbor. Fix the problems right here at the corner at 132nd Street in Eastern. Fix intersections on 291 and 92. Fix the bridge down at 136th Street. Fix 132nd Street so it's not chip and seal and actually pave it. If he wants to be a good neighbor, let him be a good neighbor. Don't use my tax dollars to fix everything that he's going to cause with this development. There's consequences to making this kind of change in a rural area. He says he's going to improve our property values. My friends and neighbors and family that live out here, we're not short-termers. I've lived in my house for 31 years. Most of my neighbors here are at least 20-year residents in this area. We don't care if our property values go up, because what does that do to us? It increases our tax levy. It increases our homeowner's insurance. All tax, I mean, all of our property value does to us as long-term owners is increase what we have to pay. So, him telling us that he's going to improve our property values does nothing for any of us. So, that doesn't help us. But, again, if he wants to be a good neighbor, fix some of the problems that the county cannot fix. Get another sheriff out here. We don't have city police out here. We have, I think, maybe two sheriff cars that patrol out here. What's all these extra houses gonna do to the police problems? How often do we see the sheriff drive up and down our street? Once or twice a week, maybe? I've had both sheriffs at my house at one time. Do you know how long it takes them to show up? 15, 20, 30 minutes before they can get to us. So, if you wanna be a good neighbor, hire some, a new sheriff, new deputy to patrol our area out here. I like the idea of having the fire station. We have a fire station in paradise. It's empty, a brand-new fire station with a truck in it and no firemen to run it. So, what good does it do to have a brand-new fire station in paradise? It's been sitting up there, I think, for five years, but still, it's 10 miles from this housing and development. Even if it does get manned at some point, it's not going to help us. But, that's all I have to say. I'm opposed to it being this consolidated. If he has a better plan to come back with something that the lots are bigger and more incompatible with our neighborhood, but a city development out in the country, it's not very smart. Thank you.
If there are no questions, next citizen who would care to comment, please. By the way, thank you, Mr. Jones, for putting that up. Appreciate it. It gives us a little better perspective, so, thank you.
My turn.
I don't, you seem to be the one in line. Nobody objects? Go right ahead.
My name is Richard Decker, and I live at 6819 Northeast 134th Street, Smithville, Missouri. 64089. You find it? I'm right. No, no. Right there, here we go. That's it.
Thank you.
That's my house. And I've been in there, we built that house about three, four years ago. And it's a nice community there. It really is. And it's quiet and nice. They sent me a letter, I don't know, they said, "They're gonna put these houses in there, 21 houses behind my house." And I go, "There ain't enough room back there to put 21 houses." And on top of that, where are they gonna get the water and everything they need? They're gonna put these houses side by side, and it's gonna be a mess back there. And I don't, I don't know how they're gonna put 21 houses back there. They showed me a layout. You think about it. There's only maybe 10 acres back there, and maybe over to the side. How can they stick all them houses back there? You know what the traffic's gonna be back there? Where I live and everything, it looks like they're gonna come off that street right to my house and everything. I'm going, "Oh, wait a minute. This ain't right. You wouldn't want that in your own neighborhood. You wouldn't want that happening to you." So, I started investigating. The other thing, too, is their sewer system, they said, "Well, that's the sewer system, that red line there." "What do you mean, that red line's a sewer system?" "Say, yeah, they're gonna run it back behind your house." I said, "Well, why are they gonna do that?" "Because they have to have out here, out there, they can't, unless you put in one of these small ponds-type deals out there, you can't, it won't pass a perk test." So, if he was gonna build anything out there, like I concur with that my neighbor behind me. Make it five acres. I'll go along with that, but those little bitty acreages and stuff, they're just gonna be piled, people are gonna be piled on top of each other. And plus the noise. And I'm not gonna put up with that, and neither would you. But I say no to this whole deal. That's all I got to say.
If there are no questions, next citizen who would care to comment?
Any questions?
Thank you.
My name's Jim Jokers. I live at 134th Street, 6822. I'm actually on the other side of Richard's house. I wanna bring up a couple of points about the water issue. When I moved in in 2009, the water issue in Johnson Ridge was 70 pounds. There was 13 houses in that subdivision. Now, we've got about 44. I expect, I think, one more house in there. The water pressure has dropped down to 50 in that time. And when some of the other houses that's across the street from Eastern came in, our water pressure runs now about 45 pounds. So, this whole issue about water pressure for Fire District concern and about the sprinkler system, that's exactly right. There were several misleading comments, I think, made in one of the presentations as well. One was that the big bad Johnson Ridge villain in this thing was supposed to have 104, according to the statistic I heard today, houses in that subdivision. That was true, when it first went through development. However, half of that property was sold off. So, that's why there's only 45 houses in that subdivision now. Those houses range in size, about an acre to an acre and a half, and that is true, that's the property, but we live in a conservation area, which means we've got a lot of green space around us, and we appreciate that. One of the other misleading statements that kinda comes out of this, we talk about urban, large lots. When we're talking about a country area, I don't see the reality in that particular statement. Talking about urban, large, where houses are relatively close together, even though the property value, I mean, the houses themselves are supposed to be a certain price, but that just doesn't compute as far as supposedly country living compared to an urban area where you don't expect to have a yard. You don't expect to necessarily have a sprinkler system. There was another issue related to the idea of wastewater. My job originally was environmental health and safety, so I've got some knowledge about this wastewater and the runoff. In Johnson Ridge, the runoff from the streets does go into at least two, if not three, sediment ponds, and that supports our streets and our sidewalks runoff. This smaller development is not gonna, even as you heard today already, that smaller retaining pond is not gonna hold that water. And where does the liability go when that pond runs over and goes into somebody else's property? I know we went through that a few years ago, and we had to shore up one of our sediment ponds and make sure we didn't have some kind of disaster, you know, environmental disaster like that. So, again, that's basically just my point to that.
If there are no questions, we'll move on to the next citizen.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Perhaps I'm, I thought it might be the last one. I'm Steve Gilliland, and I reside at 6605 134th Street.
Could you speak just a little bit more loudly, please? Or into the microphone a bit more, so we can hear better?
I reside at 6605. That's better, huh?
Thank you.
6605 Northeast 134th Street in Johnson Ridge. Turning out to be almost a nasty name this evening. But I'm the former developer of the Shoal Creek Valley Master Plan. Currently, I'm a partner in a home building company. And so, I've been around the block a couple of times with land development. And there's been an awful lot of talk tonight, and the last meeting you had, and people having concerns about sanitary and water, which I think there is a water pressure issue. Not sure how significant, but I think one exists. Water runoff and traffic, and you've heard enough about that. And what I wanted to say as I oppose this project is just simply the land development, the layout, the style, everything about the project in our rural setting with green, large green spaces and winding roads. And I look at this project as something that I would see in the city, where I built a lot of my houses. And I just see a couple of straight streets with small lots, and it just does not seem to fit our community. I think there's other ways to go about it. There's more than one way to skin a cat. But that was the comment that I wanted to make.
Thank you. If there are no questions, we will move on to the next citizen.
I'm Shelley Zeller. I live at 8209 Northeast 132nd Street. So, I'm about a half mile east of the proposed development. We made the choice to build our home and live out in the country. Open area, traffic is lighter than living in a city. Just, please, don't build a city subdivision just a half mile away from us so that we would encounter a lot of the issues that a city has. Just let us, please, continue to enjoy what we have. Thanks.
There are no questions? Next citizen who would like to comment, please.
Hello, Vern Windsor, 506 North Point in Liberty. And I just wanna say that I am for this, 'cause I would like to live out there, but I don't want, and I'm sorry to say, I don't want the maintenance of a three, five, or 10-acre area. And I do wanna point out that I don't think this is, this area is country. I think it's more suburban, and this development is more of a suburban-style development than city. So, that's all I have to say.
There are no questions?
Any questions?
Seeing none. Are there any other citizens who would like to be heard on this issue?
Hi.
And, yeah, if you guys can kinda queue up a little bit, that might kinda keep the traffic flowing, so, but do as you wish, but yes, please proceed.
My name's Lara DeVorek, and I live in Smithville. I'm a Clay County resident as well, and I've heard these arguments. I understand you guys built your subdivision, and you moved into one of these houses, and it's out in the country, and it's pretty nice. And you wanna keep that, and that's exactly why, you know, Mr. Gurkin wants to build out here. It's a nice area. I am a Smithville High School graduate, and I have kids, and they go to Smithville schools. And currently, we live in a duplex, and we've just outgrown it. And we've been looking for a year, we've been pre-approved for a home loan, and we're looking to buy. There is nothing to buy in Smithville. There's nowhere. And I wanna continue, I've grown up here, I want my kids to grow up here. And so, we've looked at the housing plans, and we think it'd be a great place to live, just like you guys do. You guys all live out here, and I think it's a great opportunity to increase, you know, the tax and bring more people in, let people live here in Smithville, 'cause it's a great town. So, I'm for it. That's all.
If there are no questions, next citizen, please.
My name is Antoinette Cook. My address is 612 Joseph Street in Liberty, Missouri. I am a lifelong Clay County resident. I lived first when I moved here, well, I moved here when I was four, when my parents bought their first house in Gladstone. There was nothing around it. Things came, things changed. When we moved to Liberty, where we live now, there was nothing around it. Now, there's houses, there's schools, there's a library. Things changed. We would very much like to own a home in Eastern Estates. And we think it's a wonderful property and area, and we think it should pass.
Thank you. If there are no questions, next citizen.
Hi, I'm Turner Del Cook, and I am for this. I'm 19 years old, fresh out of high school, and one of the biggest things that really appealed to me out of this is, after high school and IT school that I just got done with, seeing the prices of the house, being in my field that I'm getting ready to go into, I see a lot of opportunities for me to be able to get somewhere like this. Also, whenever I do have kids, being in the Smithville School District would be a very big plus. And being able to have this kind of an area where it's centralized- And being able to have this kind of an area where it's centralized in between Kansas City, Carney, Liberty, and Smithville, four of the biggest areas in the metro are all kind of centralized with this area, so I think that's a very big highlight. Also, a lot of the issues that are brought up are already existing issues that without a new subdivision would be issues. A thing about adding in the subdivision is it would be able to add change into this. It would be able to, the water pressure issue, you could have somebody take a look at it since there are more houses being put out there. The fire issues that they were talking about wouldn't be as big of an issue because these are higher-end houses, there would be more eyes cap on them from more surrounding areas. And, and in my personal opinion, I think a good neighbor would help somebody put a fire out instead of complaining about there not being a fire station out there yet or saying that their neighbor needs to make one. That's it.
If there are no questions, next citizen, please.
Hello?
Before you start, could we keep the conversation down so that every person can be heard on this issue? Thank you.
Hello, guys. My name is Joseph Zercher. I live on five oh five Sharon Drive, Liberty, Missouri. And obviously, there's no detail up, so I can't really give a good reference, but, um...
Could you speak just a little bit more into the mic so we can hear you better?
Yeah, sorry. You know, there's no detail, so I can't give a good reference, but there was a couple of issues I'd like to address, one of them being the clutter issue. They said it's not really possible to fit twenty houses in that little, small of an area, but directly above it, there's about forty-three houses and twice the size of an area. If you do the scaling, relatively the same. Another point I wanted to make is that a fa- our house burned down to the ground. Two years ago, I believe it was said, there's forty-three houses above that direct area that house burned down. Who's to say those forty-three houses won't burn down? Another one is, a lot of the problems that were made, such as the traffic control, there are already problems that need to be addressed. And a lot of the times, it's seasonal. During these winters, we have a lot of problems with traffic and stuff, but not year-round. And yeah, there's a lot of clutter. I don't know. But, um, yeah, sorry, I just got choked up, but I don't know, a lot of the problems that are here don't really make much sense. They say they want to have a nice country rural area. Look right above you, that's already been revoked. Anyway, you guys have a good night. I didn't mean to bother.
Thank you. If there are no questions with this witness, next citizen, please.
Good evening. My name's Scott Dillon. I live at twenty-one forty-five Red Oak Lane in Liberty, Missouri. And it's been interesting to listen to all this this evening. There's a very, a lot of impassioned discussion. And where I come down on this thing, too, I understand things change. You moved there in nineteen sixty-nine, but believe me, I've, I've had things happen to you that's happened to me. Don't want to address just like that, but I've heard the term imminent domain used against my family. But I will say this, this subdivision, I think, would be a great thing. I live in a one, I got a one-acre lot, okay? I thought I was living in estate-style living. I thought I was going to have a little bit of, of country, kind of close to where I was, and then a little thing called the flood lock flyover impacted my world, okay? And you guys worry about noise. I live next to a highway now, okay? I still am voting for this. I would vote for this because what he is trying to build is truly an estate-style living and maintenance-provided living, okay? Well, I'm sixty-three years old now, that interests me. And still, I'd like to stay in Clay County and up in that area, closer to Smithville, Carney, Liberty. It's kind of a nexus, it's a perfect situation for that. So I want you to consider that, too. There's a lot of us that are getting older, and that's, that's a dream. And speaking of dreams, pardon me, speaking of dreams, he's trying to provide twenty-one dreams, and we're trying to shut that down. I don't think that's fair. That's it.
Any questions? Next citizen, please.
Hi, my name is Mindy Skidmore, and I reside at six-two-two zero northeast one hundred and thirty-second Street. I'm going to keep this really short, because I know you guys are all ready to probably leave, and I'm confident that you're clear on the neighborhood's concerns with this proposed plan. There is one fact that has not necessarily been addressed, and that is the financial gain that will come with the proposed, with the applicant. While I completely do not fault him for seeing an opportunity, I also am a business owner myself, twenty-one years, in the Smithville community. I completely understand the importance of financial gain. However, I do truly believe both personally and professionally that there is a distinct line between financial gain and greed. While we're not opposed necessarily to having a, a development built here, this doesn't fit. Twenty-one houses on an average of eight tenths of an acre, it doesn't fit. So I just, I just ask that prior to voting, you just think about what side of the line you, you think that this falls in. Thank you.
If there are no questions, next citizen who would care to comment? How many more, just so we can get an idea, how many more citizens would like to comment on this issue? Okay, it looks like you, sir, may be the, oh, there's another one there, okay. I just kind of wanted to get an idea of where we were at, but thank you for the, the hands up. Please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Clerk, other Clay County execs here. I think you've heard a lot of emotional pleas here. I'd like to just talk for a minute about the business side of this, just for a minute, and without any disrespect at all towards the emotional situation these people have brought in front of you tonight. But on the business side of it, I am a commercial and residential broker, office in the Northland. Pretty much, my entire career has been spent in the Kansas City metro area. I wanted to give just a little bit of insight about the current situation, though, in Clay County as it pertains to real estate. At the end of the year, there was less than one month inventory in Clay County. Actually, today I looked it up, and it is point seven, so almost a half a month of inventory. Now, to give the Commission a perspective on that, the normal target for inventory on residential, on the residential side is six months. So we're resting here in Clay County at about half of one month, and the norm is six months. So you can see, we're way behind on inventory. The second thing I looked up today was Johnson Ridge. We have sold homes there, we've got clients that live there, it's a great neighborhood. Anyone care to guess how many houses are for sale in Johnson Ridge today? Zero. There are none listed in the multiple listing system in Can- in, in our Kansas City Board today. So it's a highly desirable area and room for, obviously, growth up that way. The next thing I wanted to bring out is the commercial side of the growth that we've got here now going on in Clay County. We went without commercial growth in Clay County for a long time, and the questions always come up, well, do the smoke stacks come or do the residential developments come? No one really has an answer for that, but now we've got the, the smoke stacks, if you will. I don't know if everyone's aware or not, but announced, this isn't planned, this has been announced, and the projects are underway, there's eleven million square feet of commercial and industrial building going on right here in Clay County. That's a significant amount. And just to put that in perspective for everyone, the Ford plant, who I hope all of us are darn proud that they're in Clay County, they serve a lot of different needs, including a lot of employment, that Ford plant out there, or down in Clay, Clay Como, excuse me, is four-point-seven million square feet under roof. So we've got over two times commercial roof under construction in Clay County. And then in visiting with the Economic Development Council, I find out that those, that new commercial growth is going to have six thousand, projected six thousand new jobs for our county in the next five years. You start thinking about all of that, and you got to say, well, where are we? We represent a lot of clients around the whole entire Kansas City metro. We've got a lot of clients right now building homes. One out of all of our client base is building a home in Clay County. A good majority of them are building in Eastern Jackson County. And I can take you to developments out there right now and show you where the development that is being proposed fits just exactly with what everyone is concerned about here. Nobody wants it in their backyard, but Eastern Jackson County and places, and other counties, Platte County, other counties are figuring it out. So we've got an opportunity here to support developers instead of sending them packing, because when we send them packing, you know, someone said something about valuations, when we send developers packing out of this county and put them over into Platte County or Eastern Jackson County or, God forbid, Johnson County, Kansas, what happens here? We begin to lag behind, is what we do. We'll start lagging behind schools, hospitals. Before you know it, we've got some pretty major issues up here because we can't get our arms around development here in this county. I get asked by people all the time, how come not Clay County? Well, maybe this is an example of why. So we've got to get behind these developments. This is a good one. I've known Mr. Gurkin now for going on fifty years. I can stand before you, I don't know everybody in this room, but those who know me, I can stand before you and tell you, he's not going to build something of not quality. It's going to be a very quality development, and I think one that everybody will be proud of. And those twenty-one new residents of Clay County, if you just do the math, let's just do the math for one second, just on the business side of it, let's just say each of those driveways represents seven thousand dollars in real estate taxes alone each year, annually, and I won't miss that very far. So you take twenty-one times seven, that's a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes that this county is going to have from that versus the six hundred dollars that the raw land is being taxed at now. And you multiply that by ten years, assuming no more tax increases, that's one, almost one-point-five million dollars in tax revenues versus six thousand dollars in tax revenues. I think it's really something that we've got to take a time out and really think about. That's a lot of money, that's a lot of difference. And that is not to mention, that's not to mention those twenty-one new homes, those twenty-one new homeowners, and someone mentioned that they would have three cars or whatever the number was. Let's just say they had three cars. That's three times twenty-one is sixty-three cars. I'd just about venture a bet with anybody that they'd probably buy them here in Clay County. We got all the brands. So they buy their cars here, they buy their furniture here, they buy their groceries here, they buy their clothes here, and think about all that sales tax revenue that's not even in my calculation. So I think there's a business side of this, let alone, let alone the thought that the staff at the county has recommended approval. So I'll leave you with that. I know you all have a tough, tough job. I respect that greatly, but I think this is one we need to get behind. Thank you.
If there are no questions, next citizen who would like to comment, please?
I'll be quick. I know it's late. My name is Danae. I live just off Main Street here, but I spend along a lot of time down on Eastern Avenue. And I just don't see the negative in this. I've been in the area for almost thirty years, and I remember driving Eastern Avenue when it was a gravel road. And look at it today. It's, it, it's a few years away from curb and gutter. It, it's inevitable that this area is going to be developed. We're right there next to everything. It's a very desirable location. If, if this doesn't happen now, it's going to happen right around the corner. There's just no avoiding it. And I, I would love to see Richard do it. I, I think the plan is outstanding. I have a long background in environmental sciences, and it's sound. It is, it's win-win. It's, you're not ending up with someone who doesn't care about what happens. So I'm a four. Any questions?
Questions? Please, next citizen.
I'm not a very good public speaker, so cut me some break here. My name's Doug Richards. I live at seventy-six ten northeast one hundred and thirty-second Street. I have lived in this area all my life. Everybody out in the country loves the country. That's why we're out in the country. All these people that say, oh, this is a good deal, it's a city lots out in the country, so it'd be, be great. Well, okay, well then, build your city lots in the city. There's actually lots just, it would be south of two ninety-one, wide open, that has the space for all these houses. It's already zoned for the urban, large urban things. Build them there. Don't take away what, you know, we want just because you can. I don't think that's right. I mean, these people that want to talk about, oh, well, it's a good business, it's, you know, great taxes and everything for the county. Well, you know, if the, you know, county's going to just be that, quote, greedy and just go for the money, people are going to move out. Because, I mean, they're, we're out here for the rural life, and I just think it's not a good fit for us. And, you know, having people come in and say, yeah, I would like to live out there, yeah, but they want a city house. They could live in the city if that's what they want.
If there are no questions with this citizen, next person who would like to speak?
I'm Clint Cook, six-twelve Joseph, right here in Liberty. I've noticed a lot of people talking about the country life. Hundred years ago, a hundred-plus acres was the country life. It has gone down to fifty, it's gone lower. Now, ten acres, is that the country life? To the people in this new potential subdivision, that is their country life. It is getting harder and harder to find ten acres, to find twenty, to find fifty. To a lot of people, twenty-some families, this is their country life. And who are we to say it's not? Because people that own the hundred are saying the people on fifty aren't. The one-point-five acres, is that really the country life, or is it the point-seven-five? We're, we shouldn't be judging. We should let them do what they want to do. I'm for this. I could see myself living out in a place like that. And to me, versus the lot I'm on now, that would be considered country. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no questions, next person who would like to comment? Okay, I will, okay. I was going to say, I was going to have one more request before we go back to the applicant, but please proceed.
I just want to talk again. When I hear these people talk, it was my son-in-law that told you, we like the country. All these people that are telling you how much money you can make, if all there is for you in your life is how much money do you have in your pocket, you're not a doggone very good Christian, okay? We like living in the country. We have good country values with our children, our people, and when we live out in the country, we like to have a yard space where we can go out and maybe play croquet, maybe play badminton, let your grandkids play catch. If you've got less than a half of an acre, you can't do anything with that with your kids. And these people that are in the city, as my son-in-law says, if you want to live in the city, then go buy you a house in the city. Let us keep our country lifestyle, okay? Thank you.
If there are no questions, are there any other citizens who would care to comment at this time? Are there any other citizens who would like to comment at this time? Seeing none, the applicant is recognized for any closing remarks.
No one likes change, and every person likes to be the last person to move.
No one likes change, and every person likes to be the last person to move out to the country. But this property is just over a mile outside of Kansas City, Missouri. These are eight tenths of an acre on average lots. There are none that are one-half acre. The, if you go just a half, one and a half miles south into the Kansas City limits, you will see actual suburban lots within the city limits, and those are four times, you know, ultimately, one-fourth the size of what is proposed today. This is not an urban development. The, here, the change that is proposed is development that conforms with the comprehensive plan and code. This was adopted to guide development and adopted through extensive public meetings, planning, and deliberation by the county to guide future development. The county's own experts have confirmed that this development complies with the requirements. That includes the Highway Department, the Planning Department, the Water District, the Sewer Company, and the Fire District. These are municipal-level services that will resolve many of the issues that are concerns of the neighbors. The applicant lives next door, so he has every reason to ensure that this is going to be a compatible quality development. And importantly, this was recommended by staff for approval as being in compliance with the code and comprehensive plan. The code requires a rezoning to be approved if it's found to be in compliance with the land use tier map of the comprehensive plan, and code, the staff has reviewed and said that it does. We ask you to consider the development standards from the code and the criteria for approval, and put faith in the county staff and experts that the county has put in charge of each of these subject matters to determine compliance when you make your decision. I thank you for your time.
I'm Richard Gurkin. A lot of good points have been raised. I still admire and appreciate all my neighbors and Mr. DeCosta, I, oh, there you are. I still like you, too. You're my next-door neighbor, and that's not going to change either. But our, my development project will not be a hindrance to your lifestyle. The 10 acres you own now, you will get to continue to own, as well as all my neighbors will have exactly what they have now. This new development will not be a hindrance upon you. It will be ultimately a betterment and a benefit to the neighborhood. Your privacy is considered. It will be a green space buffer. I anticipate when this is built, that it will be isolated from our neighbors, not just a privacy barrier, but ultimately isolated. So we all like our privacy, a little slice of heaven in the country, and this is it. You will have what you will have, and 21 new homeowners will be thrilled to have what they're going to have. There might be 48 new occupants to Clay County, and I'm sure if, once they recognize what it took to get this development in place, they'll be solidly behind the council or the commission and their decision. So, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments of the applicant? Seeing none. At this point, we will, is there any, is there a motion regarding 2022-24, 2022-25?
Again, did you ask for a motion?
I just did.
Okay, and again, the motion can be to approve or deny.
Yes. Thank you for, for that clarification.
Commissioners, I'm going to make a motion on 2022-24 and 2022-25 to deny. And my, my point on this is I know that there's going to be development, and we have a lot of that here in Clay County. We just approved two separate subdivisions tonight. We want to make sure that, I personally would like to see the right development put there, and I think some of your ideas are terrific. I would like to see the lots a little bit larger, though. I see some concerns, but that's where I stand. So I think you're, I would love to see you come back and see us, but I also have to take in the recommendation from our Planning and Zoning Committee. They are, they're our go-to, and we rely on them. We appoint them to that, that position and to give us the feedback we need to make our decisions. So I would love to see a nice subdivision in there, and I think you've got some great options. I'd like to see your lots just a little bit bigger, so.
Thank you very much. Motion is on the floor. Discussion, Commissioner Carpenter.
Well, I appreciate the discussion from everybody here tonight. My decision is to agree with Commissioner Thompson. I'm going to do that for a few reasons. One is, as was mentioned, on this occasion, I'm going to side with the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I do hope in the future, as was discussed earlier, that, that this process include more feedback from them in terms of the justification behind their decision. I'm also going to do so because I'm the Commissioner for the Western District. Frankly, Commissioner Thompson is the Commissioner for the Eastern District. This is in her district, and I'm going to respect her decision on this matter today. That being said, I'm going to keep an open mind going forward. The fact is, to the folks who live here, I totally understand, of course, not wanting to have a new subdivision in the area and wanting, you know, more open space. But the comprehensive plan is what it is. You know, it's from 2008. I've been here one year. It long predates my tenure here on the county commission, but it does have y'all in the urban services tier. And we, among other things, did receive a letter from a large property owner not too far from the area who says that she plans on developing her land and with a similar proposal presumably to this one. So property owners in the area are going to keep doing this. The comprehensive plan is what it is in the urban services tier. County staff reviewed and did say that it meets those criteria. Again, I'm a little unclear as to what the difference between staff's conclusion versus the Planning and Zoning Commission, what the justification for their departure from staff's recommendation is. So I, I guess my point is that my vote here today is not a commitment to, to a permanent vote to never allow for similar development like this in the area. I'm not sure that that is a sustainable position to have, given what the comprehensive plan is and given what other landowners in the area are planning to do under that plan. But again, because of the Planning and Zoning Commission and out of respect for Commissioner Thompson, I'm going to vote for denial today. And I do hope that perhaps one thing that can happen going forward is discussion amongst the neighbors can be ongoing, and perhaps more consensus can be achieved. If that's not the case, though, I'm still going to keep an open mind in terms of moving forward and future approvals, but that's where I'm at today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just on a personal observation on my part, I want to thank everyone who weighed in on both sides of the issue. These issues can become contentious, but if there's one thing that has, I think, been consistent through all this, through both evenings of hearings, and that is the degree of respect of each side showed the other, and I certainly appreciate that sometimes we are not able to achieve the level of civil discourse that was demonstrated over the past few hearings on this matter. With that, Commissioner Thompson, you are recognized for any further comments and to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our...
And Commissioners, if I may, we'll have findings of facts and conclusions of law ready for the commission for next week as well. So you'll have the, you've got the resolution today, but then we'll, based on what we've heard tonight, we'll prepare a draft for you to look at.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Counselor. That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any comments from members of the public on any items not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any comments from officeholders on issues not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any comments from agencies on issues not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. That brings us to comments from the county administrator?
I just have one. Go Chiefs, and, and I'm done.
Certainly a unifying note to end on. We, now that brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No comments, thank you.
And I also have no comments. Approval of meetings of previous sessions, I see none listed. Do we have any written reports to be submitted to the commission? No written reports submitted at this time. There is nothing listed under executive session. That brings us to recess and adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.